All right, Pam's computer says seven.
Close enough.
Hello? Are we recording? Okay. All right. One of our computers at least says seven o'clock, so we're going to go by that. It is seven o'clock. And this is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista, December 6th, 2021. Our first order of business is, one, I'd like to remind all of you to please put your cellphones or electronic devices on airplane mode or on silence so they don't disrupt the meeting. And then, second, I'd like you to join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone. Glad to see familiar faces and new faces. We have some special guests with us this evening, and we'll get to that in just a minute. But first, I'm going to introduce the staff to you. Sitting in the front row here, we have one of our city engineers, Adam Gabois. Next to him, we have our public work superintendent, Gary Peters. Our city clerk is Don Matzko. And then, on the end of our council here, we have our city engineer, Allison Fowski, also with WSB, of course. And then, we have council members Kathleen Revkin, Ann McGregor, John Trumperland, and Pam Mortenson. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And next to me, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone, for the last time at council meeting, last council meeting here. And then, we have Brian Grimm as our finance director, David Abel is our community development director. And on the end, we have Sarah Sensala. She is our city attorney. She is tag teaming with Ron Beatty, who has been our attorney for many, many years. So, welcome, Sarah. We'll see more of you. And then, on the end, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So, with that, I have a couple of changes to our agenda. First, the public, the special presentation, it's called "Public Comment on the '22 Budget", and an overview and presentation by Mr. Grimm. I'd like to move that down to be our first business item. And then, that way, I just think it fits better because then our second business item is approval of our budgets and levy and discussion. So, it'll all be together. And then, the other item we need to remove is business item number D, and that's approving a conditional offer of employment. We're going to be removing that. And then, I'd like to add a special presentation item that I will be doing. With that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Mortenson, is there a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Trumperland made that second. All those in favor signify with a "aye".
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. So, first of all, again, like I stated earlier, and I'm going to go down there since this is a special presentation to Mike. So, I'll kind of do this. So, tonight, we have a special time. This is Mike Barone's last meeting with the city, as well as any council meeting, right? You're not going elsewhere, right?
No, no.
Okay. So, you have new endeavors and a change of lifestyle, probably, right?
Yes.
All right. Probably more relaxing.
I hope so.
So, you've been here for nine? No.
Twelve years.
Twelve years. Thank you. Since '09. And previously at...
City of Eden Prairie for 17 years.
Right. So, a long history. With that, I'm not going to take up a lot of time right now. What I'm going to do is, the council, past and present, we have past council members are here. They would like to say a few words. And then, we'll come back to me. First, I'm going to start with Pam. Councilmember Mortenson.
All right. Mike.
Don't get serious.
I had to write it up. Seven years ago, I embarked on a new venture in my life, becoming a member of city council. A very exciting time and a great opportunity to learn the process of local government. With no experience in this position, I leaned on you for sharing your areas of expertise and willingness to extend your time and patience to those teachable moments. I always felt comfortable reaching out to you to gather information that enabled me to do the research on any given topic, which led me to the decisions I had to make that best serves the residents of Minutrista. I appreciate your honesty, patience, approachful manner that gave me confidence in making those important decisions. Thank you for all your hard work and commitment to the city of Minutrista throughout all your years of service. You will be missed by all the people that work with you, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Trumperland.
Is there a chill in here?
We just turned it up. Sorry.
Well, I had heard from somebody that it would be a cold day in you-know-where when Mike retired, but evidently, that's what this chill is all about. Mike and I have not always seen eye to eye, but he's always been very diplomatic, which I think is a very positive attribute for everybody to have. But it can be times when it's hard to put that into play. But Mike was always, and he's always diplomatic. Ultimately, we know that Mike always had the best interests of the city at heart. I firmly believe that. I appreciate the work that you've done for the city, especially being, I'm here and closer to it now than I would have been 12 years ago. And I thank you for that, and I wish you the long and happy retirement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Ms. McGregor.
Okay. So, it's been almost a year since my orientation with Mike. And he told me that his science research background at that orientation, and that gave us common ground almost immediately. People with training in research tend to look at matters in similar ways, and they can draw perspectives about topics that make it easier to navigate conflicts that come up. So, I've been always grateful for Mike's patience with my newness and my ignorance of city government issues and methods. A lot of people with his skill base and experience probably wouldn't have been as patient. I appreciate that he thoughtfully addressed my questions and concerns, both on the phone calls and in meetings, working to find common ground and compromises on the various points. What I admire also is the fact that Mike would tell me directly if he didn't have an answer, and was perfectly okay with directing me to the individual who probably had the answer. Taking the ego out of management isn't easy, so when I observe it, I always make a positive note of it in my head. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to work with Mike this past year, and I wish him a long and very fun retirement.
Thank you very much.
Mike, I just want to say thank you. You've always been very knowledgeable, and I know I ask a lot of questions, and you're always very helpful in keeping me informed and helping me find the answers I need. You put a lot of work and time and effort into your work, and it's very appreciated. I can safely say everything you do to assist with onboarding new council members is greatly appreciated, and it made the transition on the council very smooth, myself and Ann. You'll be missed for sure, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to work with you over the past year. Thank you for all you've done for Minutrista, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much.
So, we have two former council members with us this evening. George Sineko was a council member and worked with Mike. George, just a few words.
Good evening. Lisa knows that I'm not the best at speaking, so she should please keep it short, so I will. Mike, I'm going to take credit for all the good things you said about him. I voted to hire him, so that's why he's here. Mike has always been very, very knowledgeable. He was always well-prepared. I think you've seen that, sitting on the council. He's also very, very good diplomatically with the city, with the residents, and the council, and the staff. I do want to say one thing is that I want to thank every one of you that are up here. The city is very, very fortunate that you're putting your time and the effort. So, with that, I want to thank you, everybody. Mike, thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you very much, George.
And then, we have Mike Malater, whom I often call "Paul" for some reason or another.
I don't play ball. So, I had the opportunity to serve with Mike as a city council member, as we know, for the past four years. Actually, a year ago, as I drove up here, I realized it was my last council meeting, a year ago. And one thing I learned in those, in that time is that being a city administrator can be a real, well, thankless job at times. You kind of get it from everybody, right? You get it from constituents for things that you could never possibly control or even think of. Obviously, you have to deal with the staff and unions and so forth. And you've got council and mayor. They're always a lot of fun. You've got other government agencies, and the council, things like that. And so, you really kind of get it from all sides. And it's hard to make everyone happy, actually, just kind of keep the peace. And I think a lot of people alluded to that. And I think that the key to doing that is being able to mediate that and take all sides into consideration and be a charitable person, good answer. You can't say yes to everyone. You can't always say no. But I think you've done a great job with it, Mike. And for the thankless job, I say thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Mike.
So, everybody is correct. Mike has done a wonderful job. So, I had the pleasure of working with Mike when he first came here in 2009. I was on the council at the time. And then, I've had the pleasure of working with him as a community and him as administrator. And I can tell you, I don't think this council or the city would be in the good position that they are today without Mike's leadership. Your leadership has been phenomenal, not only for the community, but for staff, as well as for council and myself. I can say I really feel that I have been a better mayor under your tutelage and under your supervision, if you will. There's times, of course, we've disagreed, and you've told me why, and you've told me why I have to change my mind. And then, there's times where I've tried to do your job, and you've told me, "No, that's not your job. That's my job." And so, but the respect, the mutual respect that you and I have had and that you've had with many of the council members, I think is a huge attribute for you, a huge, because it just says what you are. You have a lot of integrity. You have a lot of honesty. And I've really appreciated that. And I know that all the things that I've learned under you, I will take with me, not just for the rest of my council years, but for the rest of my life. With that, I'd like to ask you to come down here. And I'll try and talk loud. Do you want this? Yeah.
Sure.
All right. So, we have a resolution. You know, we do this all the time. We didn't tell you about it. We hoped you would be surprised. Were you surprised? Good. So, Ally and I worked on this, and I know one other person I should mention, Lisa. I did call Cheryl Fisher, a former mayor, who you served with, who has served with you. And she had nothing but good things to say about you. She said she enjoyed working with you, and because of your leadership, Minutrista is a better place and going forward into the future. But also, not with us this evening, she's ill this evening, is Ally Pofus, and she's our director of administration. And I worked with her to work on this resolution. If you don't like it, it's her fault. And we did have to shorten it up because it got really, really long. And she told me that these type of resolutions are usually one page. So, I'm sorry if we... So, we had to shorten it up. But here it goes. So, this resolution is of appreciation to Michael Barone, who is a city administrator for his 12 years of service to the city of Minutrista. Where else? Michael Barone has served Minutrista since 2009. He has served as the assistant city administrator, interim city administrator, and most recently, as a city administrator since January of 2015. Previously, Mike Barone served the city of Eden Prairie for over 17 years as the assistant city administrator or assistant to the administrator and in human resources. Whereas, Michael Barone has worked successfully with Minutrista council members, supporting their decisions, providing guidance, and implementing strategies to fulfill the council's goals and objectives. Michael Barone has always been responsive to residents' concerns and issues. And whereas during Michael Barone's tenure at the city of Minutrista, he has overseen the completion of major water and road infrastructure improvements, successfully negotiated numerous labor union contracts, and carefully managed the city budget and finances while leading the city during a time of continued growth. Mr. Barone has also maintained a dedication to city employees by encouraging continued career development and growth. And whereas Michael Barone's commitment to delivering quality city services and maintaining integrity of city's infrastructure, finances, public safety, streets and parks throughout the last 12 years has left the city in an excellent position for the future. And whereas Michael Barone's experience, guidance, and leadership has been invaluable to elected officials, city staff, and the community. And whereas the city council thanks Michael Barone for his 12 years of dedicated service to the city of Minutrista and nearly 30 years in the public sector, and wishes him the best in retirement and in his next chapter. Therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Minutrista to approve the resolution of appreciation for Michael Barone, city administrator, for his 12 years of service to the city of Minutrista. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. You have to figure out who may or not. So, all those in favor, signify with a "aye".
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And Pam, can you hand me that box? There's two copies here, so you get one. This one here? Yeah. I hope this is the right box. It is. You get the box, too. This is a little something that you could put on your desk at home or wherever you want. But a little gift, remembrance, in case you forget. And we are going to get some pictures because I don't think you've ever had a picture with the entire council. So, the entire council is going to come down, and then, here, I'll show you some council pictures. Do you want a box though? Or without? Or both? Or both? And now, to Ann.
This is uncommon.
So, last but not least, Mike has prepared a speech. He was going to give it at the end of the meeting, and I think you'll want to give it now, right?
Yeah. Well, I asked the mayor that as I saw my wife and son and his fiancee show up. And I thought, "Uh-oh. I want to do this now while everybody's here instead of you guys having to watch it on YouTube." So, it's quite long, so you'll have to bear with me. You only get one chance at this. So, these are my farewell comments to you all. So, with tonight being my last Minutrista city council meeting, I wanted to make sure I took the opportunity to give some thanks to the many people who have helped me along the way as I end my time here. As Ann sort of alluded to, I had a career in medical research before beginning my career in local government. I got a BS in biochemistry from the University of Minnesota. I worked about six and a half years at the VA Medical Center in the research department in Minneapolis after college. My thanks for that go to Dr. Robert Genis, who was my college advisor, and Dr. Art Fromm and Dr. Khalil Ahmed, who are my supervisors at the VA. They're wonderful people. When I decided to transition to the public administration field, I went to Hamlin University to get my master's degree. And I thank Dr. Vera Vogel-Sankums, who's unfortunately died a few years ago. But she took a chance on admitting me, somebody who had kind of an odd and unconventional undergraduate degree into the program. Took some courage on her part to do that. But I thank Dr. Vogel-Sankums as she was one of the founding directors of the Hamlin Public Administration Master's Program. I worked two internships coming out of grad school, first at the city of Crystal and then at the city of Eden Prairie, before I got hired full-time at Eden Prairie. I then spent 17 years at Eden Prairie before coming to Minutrista. I'd like to thank assistant city manager Nancy Dino and city manager Jerry Delgar, who hired me at Crystal. And then, at Eden Prairie, I'd like to thank HR director Natalie Swagert and city manager Carl Julie for hiring me at Eden Prairie. I spent 10 years doing HR work before becoming the assistant to the city manager at Eden Prairie. Scott Neal hired me to the assistant position. I would like to thank Scott, who is now the city manager at Edina, for that opportunity. It was all great experiences that helped me once I got here to Minutrista. When I came to Minutrista, I was hired as the assistant city administrator in October of 2009. City administrator Mike Funk, council members George Sineko, who's here, and Mayor Cheryl Fisher, who comprised the personnel committee, selected me to join the city of Minutrista staff. I'd like to thank those people for that opportunity that I received. When I became city administrator in January of 2015, those approving my hire to that position were Mayor Lisa Whalen, council members Mark Vanderlinde, Bob Christians, Patricia Thol, and Pam Mortenson. My thanks to those folks for giving me this chance. Which leads me where I am today. I would be nothing without the dedicated and professional staff that we have here at Minutrista. I'd like to thank our entire city staff. We have 38 staff members, but especially our management team, which is Brian Grimm, David Abel, Ally Pofus, Paul Falls, Gary Peters, and Don Matzko, and previously, Chris Limquist, who is our city clerk. I would also like to thank our attorneys and engineers, Ron Beatty, Andrew Biggerstaff, and Sarah Sensala, who's here from Kennedy and Graven, and then, from WSB Engineering, Mark Erickson, Paul Hornby, and now Allison Fowski and Adam Gabois. I cannot thank all of you people enough. It's been a privilege working with all the people that I've just named. City staff here at Minutrista are tremendous. They have made it easy and fun to come to work every day. We work as a great team. These staff members are extremely hardworking, very knowledgeable in their fields, and all have great leadership qualities. I'll miss you all very much. Overall, for the city council, I know you have, all have very tough jobs serving this community, and I appreciate working with all of you over the years. For previous councils, I wish to recognize and thank former mayor Cheryl Fisher, former city council member George Sineko, Patricia Thol, and Mike Malater. They did a great job serving the city. From the current council to Ann McGregor, as a new council member, I've really enjoyed getting to know you over the past year or so. You are open-minded, very willing to listen and learn about the ins and outs of local government, and I wish you nothing but the best in your future. For Kathleen, as a new council member this year as well, I appreciate that you're so even-keeled in your approach, and I think you represent a new wave of elected officials in Minutrista, moms and dads with young families that are starting to invest in the future of this city. The city is growing, and in the next 20 to 40 years, will continue to grow with all the expectations that go with a growing city. I wish you good luck to help guide the future growth of this city. To John Trumperland, thanks so much for throwing your name into the hat. When council member Thol resigned, you are very even-handed and pragmatic, very thoughtful in your approach to the issues that you have faced on both the planning commission and the council. I, along with the rest of your staff, the rest of our staff, appreciate your support over the years. We know that you view city staff as experts in their respective fields, and you have consistently supported staff but are not afraid to ask the tough questions. So, I wish you nothing but good luck and good health in your future years. And to Pam, I'm so glad that you, Patricia Thol, and Mayor Whalen ran for seats on the city council back in 2014. Those were very turbulent times for this city back then, and you and the other two I just mentioned guided the city back on the solid ground. You three were exactly what was needed at the time for the city and for me personally as the new city administrator. The crazy plans for a centralized water plant, water distribution system that is quickly approaching a price tag of $22 to $23 million was rejected by the leadership of Mayor Whalen, Patricia Thol, and yourself. You helped Minutrista get back on track to construct our current system, the two water treatment plants, the connection of the two systems, the new water tower, all saving our taxpayers literally millions of dollars. I'm very thankful to have worked with you and wish you nothing but the best in the future. And to Lisa, what can I say? As I mentioned, when talking about Pam, I am so glad that you decided to run for mayor in 2014. I got to know you a little bit when I was the assistant and you were finishing up your last term on the council. But I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to know you better and to work with you more closely throughout my tenure here as city administrator. In my opinion, you are one of the smartest and best elected officials I've ever met in my 30 years of local government. You are genuinely appreciative of all of our city staff. And believe me, city staff notices and appreciates your outreach and your support. You were the right person at the right time to help guide the city out of that water infrastructure mess. You have tried to do the right things for the city, and it shows in the many accomplishments during your time on the council and especially your time serving as mayor. I wish you nothing but the best. Moving away from work, I want to thank my dad. Moving away from work, I want to thank my dad, he was ninety-one years old, Lou Baroni, and my mom Barberoni, who died just about a year ago. They provided a great foundation for me and my three siblings, and they were always a source of inspiration to work hard, be honest and fair with others, and do the right things in life. I'm entirely grateful to them. I would also like to thank my own family, my wife Jerrilyn and my two kids, Teresa and her boyfriend Tom, and to my son Marcus and his fiancee Casey. Jerrilyn and I have been together since we met as college freshmen just over forty-five years ago, and she has, I'm trying not to cry, and she has been my best friend throughout all those years. All my family members have been there for me through all the ups and downs in my career. I appreciate them and love them very much. I tell people the four happiest days of my life are the day I met Jerrilyn, the day I married Jerrilyn, the day Teresa was born, and the day Marcus was born. My last day of employment on December seventeenth may make that list soon. And then, just some final personal thoughts about my tenure here at Minatrista. It's been a great journey for me. I tried to make an impact here, and I hope other city staff and city council feel the same way. There's a writer named Ursula Legwin, who authored some words about a person's journey through life, and I would like to share them with you. Ms. Legwin wrote the following. Achievement is a powerful motivator. Having goals and milestones to reach are essential for our personal growth. However, the final realization of any goal or dream is not the true reward. In life, it's not the successes that hold the most value, it's the journey along the way towards those achievements where the true treasures lie. It's the memories, the experiences and the friendships, it's the trials and the tribulations, it's the laughs and the tears, it's the resolve to keep going after failure, and the tenacity to continue to get back up after defeats. It's the dedication, the hours of practice, and the development of old and new skills. It's the dreaming, the planning, and the gathering of knowledge. It's the daily actions and habit. The journey is what life is all about. Don't get so lost in the mindset of future accomplishments that you forget to enjoy and embrace, the everyday happenings that are paving the road towards that achievement. The final results are what we all seek, but it's the life in between the dream and the accomplishment that we must remember to enjoy. And she summarized by saying, "It's good to have an end to journey toward, but it is the journey that matters in the end." So with that, my thanks and my gratitude to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for wonderful words. So if anybody would like to leave, you can do so at this time. You don't have to stay, but you can stay if you'd like. Always welcome to. So our next item on the agenda, and thank you for coming, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Persons to be Heard. And we do have, we have somebody signed up, so I'm gonna kind of give you a little bit of a background. So a few months back, I got an email from Tim and Brenda, I won't say their last name, Fullford, thank you, and they have a situation by their property that they wanted to discuss. And so I said I would be happy to meet with them, and I invited our Chief of Police and Mike Baroni to join me in that meeting. And at that meeting, it was suggested that they come to the council under Persons to be Heard and present their case, so to speak. And I told them, I give them a little more latitude. Normally, we say around three minutes. It might be a little bit longer than that, but they have something that they need to share with you, and then the council can decide what the next steps might be. So with that, you'll just have to state your address for the record. It's Tim and Brenda Fullford. So just come to the podium. And again, we just need your address for the record as well.
Brenda and I live at 2555 Highland Road. Thank you for having us. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Mr. Baroni, Chief Falls, council members and staff. My name is Tim Fullford, and I come here this evening to bring an issue of concern to your attention regarding off-road vehicle noise. I would like you to know that my family and I are off-road vehicle owners. Our concern lies with the problems that arise when these types of vehicles and their use impose on other property owners in an unreasonable way. When used in a loud, repetitive, frequent, and continuous manner, such as being driven on a track, these vehicles can affect the neighboring properties in a very negative way. Specifically, a property adjacent to ours has created this type of off-road vehicle track. The noise from the vehicles driven on the track, going in circles repeatedly, is very loud. At times, there have been multiple off-road vehicles using the track. However, it only takes one off-road vehicle, and we cannot be outside comfortably, we can't open our windows or escape the noise, even when we are in our own home with the windows closed while this activity is occurring. This has affected our ability to enjoy and use our home and property. We also live in an established horse property. We have been advised that this situation could be dangerous for horses and the handlers working with these animals due to the stressful circumstances when noises are created by loud off-road vehicles being used in this manner. We have serious concerns that this type of off-road vehicle usage greatly affects our property value and the property values of nearby neighbors. We have attempted to communicate with the property owners to resolve this issue without success. We have communicated with local law enforcement on multiple occasions. We have been informed that the current ordinances do not provide officers with the ability to address this problem. We are asking the City Council to please consider how the current laws for recreational vehicles, specifically off-road vehicles, could be amended or a separate ordinance created to protect property owners from such off-road vehicle noise. The City of Minatrista currently has an ordinance that addresses the noise problems that might arise from off-road motorcycle usage. We would like to ask that the City Council please consider an amendment to this existing ordinance or the creation of a similar ordinance that addresses the same types of concerns regarding noise from off-road vehicles. As ORV owners, please know that we are not in the mood of eliminating the use of or all off-road vehicles. We feel that the vast majority of off-road vehicle owners are respectful. In addition, we would also offer that it might be considered that, just as the current off-road motorcycle laws allow, if a property owner gives permission for this type of off-road vehicle operation to occur within five hundred feet of the property line, then it would be permissible by the City of Minatrista. I have an example of an ordinance from the state of Washington that addresses off-road vehicle noise problems. I would like to offer this as a possible resource to draw upon when considering any potential changes or additions to the current ordinances. I would like to thank Chief Falls and his department and Mr. Baroni for their assistance. Mayor Whalen and City Council members, thank you for allowing me to come forward and be heard regarding this concern.
Thank you.
So we have, they have a number of videos that they took from a couple of different perspectives on their property, and I asked them to send me a few of them, and they did. So David, if you want to. That's the first one.
Is your property the white fence?
White rear, all of the fence.
This is from the summer when it was dusty and dry.
We are close to five hundred feet away from that stop door.
And then I think the only other thing that we saw at the meeting we had with the Fullfords was a sign that was made by the neighbor. They said they'd talked to them before, and so after, I think, one conversation, that's what they put up. So the Fullfords constantly video-record our minor children while they play in our field. You could be next.
And then, this goes on for hours on end. I mean, so we're just seeing little tiny snippets.
At times.
Yeah.
At times. Some days there's nothing, some days it's a very short duration, some days it could be over span while.
Yeah, okay.
We just never know.
So what, so basically, the council should decide if we want to pursue having staff bring something back or looking at a possible ordinance. We wouldn't obviously do anything tonight, but I think they're looking for some reprieve. And the other, the other issue and some of the things that we need to think about is, I know that some of us, not Kathleen, but live out in, in an area where there's larger lots, and this could happen to anybody. I mean, it could, you know, people right now could move next door and start revving up their, their things and toys, and it's, it's disturbing. I mean, when you have this on an ongoing basis, so, I don't know. I think it's something we should at least consider.
I would agree with you on that, Lisa.
I'd agree. Work session, investigate whether some of our surrounding, more rural cities have something on noise pollution. I mean, motorcycles, et cetera, they usually, they're going through the neighborhood and they're gone.
Right.
So it's, it's a different animal here.
Yeah, it's, it's the repetitiveness, I think, that, that they're concerned about. Of course, now, last summer or two, you could see the dust. I mean, yeah. And the fact that they can't enjoy their property, that's, that's the other issue, too.
I didn't realize that the noise ordinance that we had didn't cover this. Because actually, I met you while I was campaigning back in the summer, and I thought it was horrible then. And I hope the dogs aren't showing up in your garage anymore either. And I've, I've thought about you off and on, but I thought, Shannon and I had told you to file with the police, and when I didn't hear anything more about it, I thought it was handled, but apparently not. So yes, I'm very definitely in favor of doing something to have it. And for the record, I went through just a tiny bit of it, and nothing like what you're going through. In the back of our property, we had people doing three-wheelers, four-wheelers, whatever, for a summer, but they were always polite, they always stopped by nine o'clock. But I have to admit, frequent use is very annoying. So I now know you've been doing it at least two summers, probably even more, and something should be done.
Okay, good. I, I agree. So we'll send it to staff. I don't know exactly when we'll bring it back. Chief, you'll probably have to give some input, of course, attorneys and so on. But again, I just want to reiterate, it's not just for this particular property, although it's brought to light, I think, which is a good thing, because I think we want to prevent it from happening to others as well. So I'll leave it up to you, staff, to determine when you can bring it back. Maybe February, maybe. I know we have several work sessions that are pretty full, but maybe it can be February or March.
Madam Mayor, I will not be here, but I will be happy to have staff.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be here either.
I'm coming back.
You're coming back.
I'm not.
For the record.
I am not coming back.
Okay, so staff will bring it back and let us know what a good timing would be?
Yes, and I'm sure there'll be several discussions as you move forward with it, and then they can do additional research or whatever's needed. But I will definitely put this on the lieutenant's plate to bring back.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. So with that, we have nobody else signed up under Persons to be Heard, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. There are quite a few, so I will try and get through them. First, we have approve our work session meeting minutes from November fifteenth, 2021. Approve our City Council regular meeting minutes from November fifteenth, 2021. We have a resolution to approve claims, a resolution to approve the designation of the polling places for the 2022 state primary and state general elections, a resolution to approve the city meeting calendar for 2022, and I did point out to Don that we needed to make that slight little change for November fourteenth. And then a resolution to approve and finalize the 2021 budgeted transfers, and then approve a contract, and it's an MOU for maintenance of the cafeteria benefits in 2022 with I U O E Local 49, L E L S 116, and L E L S 343. And then we also have a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding for the holiday observance schedule for labor unions, and then accept the resignation of our Building Inspector Gary Nelson effective today. And then a resolution to approve the agreement regarding the purchase of the tax-forfeited property, and a resolution update authorized Signors. Signors, that sounds weird. Signors, sorry. And then a resolution to approve the actuarial services with Gallagher Benefit Services for the 21 GASP number seventy-five compliance. And then a resolution to approve Hennepin County Recycling Funding Policy Agreement for January 2022 through December 2025, and a resolution to accept additional distribution of funding and to accept the second half of the original ARPA distribution scheduled for July of 2022 via the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funding Plan established under the American Rescue Plan Act. And so we've, we are accepting the first half of the second payment, and we're then also accepting with this resolution the second half of both of those payments. Just wanted to clarify that. And then we're also, a resolution awarding the contract with the Mingar Construction to replace the wet well valve pit crosser piping at lift station number eleven, and then approve legal fees with Kennedy and Graven for the 2022 season. And then a resolution authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to subdivision agreement by and between the City of Minatrista and the Meadows on Halsted Bay, and then a resolution authorizing execution of the First Amendment to the Stormwater Maintenance Agreement by and between the City of Minatrista and Enchanted Development LLC. That's a lot. Any questions? I know you all read through all of them, and if you had questions, I know you also asked Mike. So is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through T?
So moved.
Almost ran out of.
That's true.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathleen. So Ms. Mortenson made that motion, and Kathleen made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to our public hearings. We do have a public hearing for our fee schedule, and we will want to adopt that. And then if we do, then we want, we'll also then approve a publication of Ordinance Number 472 by title and summary only. Mr. Grimm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So this starts on page one sixty of the council packet, and it basically incorporates and ties in all the different fee schedule items we talked about during the work sessions from basically August through the rest of the year relating to, you know, utility rates for water, sewer recycling, as far as some of the other land use fees that is updated in the fee schedule as well. All of those changes are, were notated in the schedule. Do they have the strike through in red font? Any changes that are made? I don't know if the council would like to go through any of them individually, but basically the consultant fees that are passed on through land applications are just updated based on their updated fee schedules. Utility rates are going up four percent across the board based on just what we've done to be able to pay for some of the water infrastructure improvements that we've done as well as continue to do. The sewer quarterly rates going up two dollars from one oh three to one oh five, the recycling from eleven dollars a quarter to twelve dollars a quarter. I think those are the main highlights from the fee schedule. I guess I'll stand for any questions. I think we technically have to have a public hearing for the land use components of the fee schedule, so that's also.
Right, that's part of the public hearing. Well, first I'll ask council questions or comments. Okay, then I'll open it up for the public hearing. If anybody is here to speak or have questions regarding the 2022 fee schedule, you can do that at this time. I don't think there's anybody here for that, so I will close the public hearing and take it back to council. I'm looking for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 472, which will be the 2022 Fee Schedule effective January one, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGregor. So any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then I need a motion to approve the publication of Ordinance Number 472 by title and summary only.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll move on to our business items, and we are doing our public comment period as well as the presentation. So I'll hand it over to you.
Correct.
Mr. Grimm?
Madam Mayor and Council, yes, this was the public comment portion for the 2022 final levy and budget discussion, which I think was probably rightfully moved for the much better presentation that was Mr. Baroni had earlier in the evening. I'll try to keep this pretty, pretty brief. I think it's eleven slides. You're just outlining what was in the packet, basically pages four through fifty-five. I'm sure everyone has had time to digest and go through, so. What we're looking for is the adopting the final tax levy. This is our last meeting before the deadline for the county for December twenty-eighth at the end of the month here. Just to review for the general public, City Council met with staff at work sessions in August second, sixteenth to review the initial presentation on the preliminary tax levy. At the time, we adopted on September twentieth a preliminary tax levy that ended up being a 5.53% increase. So since then, staff has gone through with, internally as well with council, the final budget process, you know, talking about enterprise funds, utility, water, sewer, et cetera, as well as parks, and that's all been incorporated into the budget. Staff recommends certifying the final levy for the same amount as the preliminary levy and approving the budget documents as that were presented in the packet. Some of these items, we'd just like to notate what we go through each year is, obviously, the financial stability of the obviously, the financial stability of the city is the number one. The issue each year, or one of the main tenets that we look at is making sure we're on good solid financial ground. Capital improvements is a big item each year. Staffing levels, one of the things that was incorporated into this year's budget was adding a police and a public works employee as of July 1st of next year, half year. And then the continued funding of the pavement management plan, which we did up that by another $150,000 from last year. So that's some additional investment there. So what we have when we bring all that together is you can see the different components of the levy. General fund, about 3.6 million. Debt fund levy is about three quarters of a million, about $750,000. That additional road maintenance I just referenced from 725 to 875. And then we also are starting to add more dollars back into our capital improvement program for our equipment. You can see we have upped that by $50,000 each year to get away from issuing, you know, some equipment certificates and some other small financing items. So you can see the gross levy of the $5,375,000 roughly. Once you add in the dollars from the fiscal disparities program, the net levy will be about $5,216,960. This is just a chart showing our revenues and expenditure trends in the general fund for the last few years. Obviously, this is the year we received the coronavirus funds, you know, $580,000 roughly. So that was, went into the general fund as was decided in 2020. The new ARPA funds, that was just one of the consent agenda items. That's been put in a special revenue fund. And I think the first portion has been allocated more for water improvements for 2022 and beyond. We have some time to make that final decision. And then you can see, other than our 2021 and 22 budgets have been consistent as far as, you'll see in some future slides, spending some of this additional fund balance down to, you know, obviously support our programs as well as keep the tax levy manageable. So here is some of that budget trend analysis. One of the things I guess I'll point out is, you can see we spent down some fund balance for a few years in 17, 18, 19. 2020, we had the money come in from the federal government, as well as we did very well in building permits in 2020. So that was the two items there. And then you can see budgeting to use some of that general fund balance. And we're still planning on being at about 50% at the end of 2022. And we also asterisk there is the transferring $225,000 from the general fund to our CIP equipment fund. Tax impacts, so this is a slide we usually try to show here just to give people more of a dollar amount and a few different valued properties. You can see with our 5.53% increase, you know, about 3% of that is, I guess, not ate up in growth, but the growth pretty much brings down what's the increase for existing property owners. So you can see basically it's a $19 to $59 annual increase on average. If your home had about a 5% valuation increase, which is about the average. And some people stayed flat, some people went up 9%, you know, somewhere in between. So basically, it's about $2 to $5 a month when you break it down by month. So some last points as far as the budget. Obviously, it incorporates labor contracts and the non-union salaries and benefits. Funds of our capital and equipment program, like we just stated, as well as our pavement management plan, that additional $150,000. We're spending down about a little over $300,000 in fund balance to keep the general fund levy a pretty manageable amount. Fund balance percentage to be about that 50%. And then as far as municipal state aid, we've basically drawn down most of that money. So I think for 2022, we aren't planning on having any MSA projects. But we do have our Jennings Cove area project, as well as some overlay out in the Enchanted area is what's planned for 2022 per council direction. So lastly, looking for the action on the final tax levy. I think it was a good budget process again this year. Once again, the levy increase is being presented at the same as the preliminary proposed levy, the 5.53% increase, which the roads, equipment, and our general services are all funded under that proposal. That's all I have. Stand for any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Otherwise, I mean, I'll open it up for other comments. Any of you here for commenting on the budget? All right, so that then will conclude our truth and taxation opportunity and comments from the public. Counsel?
I'm just gonna make a comment that for anybody listening who doesn't necessarily understand, this doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes actually go up by the levy amount. There are a lot of other factors involved, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And also, I think one thing we try to always emphasize is, yeah, just the city portion of the taxes. There's what the school districts do, what the county, you know, the Hennepin County assessors does the valuation of our properties. So obviously, that, all we can do is fund our city budget and try to make it reasonable across the board. But there are always going to be some anomalies as far as what people's values, et cetera, so.
Right, I think that's important, because I think a lot of people, I didn't understand it last year. And so I think a lot of people out there don't necessarily understand that. When they see the levy increase, they automatically think their taxes are going up by that much.
And if, like Brian said, if their valuation didn't increase, actually, their taxes may even go down. Because when you look at the net increase, the 3.3% new home growth offsets that 5.53, so it's really only a 2.23, whatever, increase overall. So they may actually see a decrease. If they've gone up a little bit, they'll see a slight increase, but.
Yeah, I guess as far as that, our tax rate has actually gone down a bit, because our total value in the city's gone up about 8% or so. And, you know, the growth is about 3% existing, property's 5%. So to your point, as far as, yeah, if you only had a real incremental increase to your valuation or a flat, you probably saw your city share your taxes go down.
Do you know what our tax rate will be for '22?
It's just over 23%. It's like 23.08 or something.
Oh, okay.
And I think for 2021, it was 23.6, so it's gone down a half a percent.
A little bit, so that's a good, good number, too, tax rate. I know some of the other communities are much higher than that.
That's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So, all right.
There is just one thing. I did talk to Mike about this earlier today, too, on our call, regarding the American Rescue Plan funds, the transfer of that over into the water funds of $430,000. We did have a discussion of some of that money going towards broadband. So my understanding is that when the next half comes in, we'll kind of relook at those numbers and channel the money based on the percentage of, you know, where the money is currently being used. Because not all people are on water right now, nor do all people need broadband improvements. So I think the balance of that is something we should address this coming year.
Correct, yeah, I think that was the 2022 funds, yeah, would be looked at when those come in as far as how we want to allocate those out. But I think, yeah, water and cable are two of the primary and eligible uses.
Right, eligible, yeah. And, yeah, we had that discussion. We said, well, we know we would put at least 50% of it into the water fund, but we'll figure out what the correct balance is, so as we move forward. And maybe we can do that, maybe you'll come up with those numbers maybe by January or something, so we'll know. Because I think we'll want to know some of that for our broadband issues, so. Any other questions? Okay, otherwise, our next point of business is to adopt and approve the 2022 tax levy. Sir?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, who made, Kathleen made the motion, and Pam seconded that. Then all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then the next one is to adopt and approve the 2022 budgets, the general fund, special revenue, debt service, CIP funds, and the enterprise funds.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathleen. Second that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So now we'll move on to adopt ordinance number 468, which is amending the Minutrista city code by amending the official zoning map of the city. I believe that's Mr. Abel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Back in November of 2019, the city council adopted the official 2040 comprehensive plan update. That plan reflects a community planning process conducted in the years of 2016 through 2018. It involved elected officials, appointed officials, city staff. We had community organizations represented, the public at large, developers, and other stakeholders who were involved in that about 18-month process that we went through. As the council knows, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we did not hold public meetings, and we're holding virtual meetings. And as a result of that, we delayed this process, wanting to hold actual in-person meetings so we could explain to folks what exactly all of this means. The Metropolitan Council, the agency that oversees the adoption of the comprehensive plan for the seven-county metro area, actually extended the timeline to allow for cities to do this, understanding the pandemic that we were in. And sometimes, some of these things are easier to do in person than they are virtually. We sent out just shy of 1,000 notices to residents in Minutrista about it and did field a lot of calls as a result of that. But I think it paid off in the end to hold it in person. We did hold an informational meeting with the planning commission in which residents did attend and asked some good questions and get some good answers. And that was followed up then with an official public hearing that the planning commission held, where again, residents were able to come and ask questions. The planning commission did ultimately vote with a unanimous vote to recommend that the council adopt that zoning map change, if you will. The updated maps on your screen and part of your packet. So with that, we're looking for the council to adopt the ordinance. And then there is the title and summary there for you as well.
Thank you. And I told you this this afternoon, too. I think it was a good idea to have that general informational meeting and then also the public hearing. So they had two opportunities to basically get information, so. Good, good job. Thank you. So, questions? You know, and you were at both meetings, so you probably know it inside out.
The things were very good and handled very well, and the information was distributed to everybody that attended very well.
Thank you. All right. So is there a motion then to approve ordinance number 468, which is amending the city code by amending the official zoning map of the city?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. So any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And next, then, is there a motion to publish the ordinance by 468 by title and summary only?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Refkin made that motion, and Mr. Trumperlin seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we move on to approve our labor agreement for the '22 and '23 new L E L S local community, yeah, 473 Community Service Officers Union. I'm sorry, it's kind of funny, because there's only two people.
Yeah, I know. There's not much you can do about that. So I'll take this as normally something Ellie would do, but I have no problem stepping in and doing this since I was involved in all aspects of this process. So we have, as you mentioned, two CSOs. They decided to organize back in February. We didn't really get around to working with them until the summer. We worked summer through into November. Finally, on November 16th, after a number of sessions, we came up with a final labor agreement with them. You have a red line in your packet, and I only mention that because this is not, we did not have a union prior to this year with this group. And they utilized a police officer's contract as kind of their template. You got to start somewhere. And so I wanted to make sure that the council members saw the red line to see what it was that they were initially asking for and what we ended up settling at. And we did, I would say, toss a number of things that really don't generally apply to non-sworn personnel like police, and we can go through that. And so what I have in here is kind of an article-by-artikel change. I'll just kind of touch on some highlights. I hope all of you had a chance to go through it. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But it's a two-year contract, starts in January. It doesn't start this year. It'll go for two years. That helps us align moving forward. All of our labor contracts will be up at the end of '23. It helps us when we negotiate wage and benefits and also if there's change in other things that may be applicable to all contracts. So it's better to, I think, to have them lined up than to have them staggered. It's a little bit more work, because you're doing multiple contracts at once. But I think just for the idea of having the continuity of all these contracts along with whatever city, other city employees get, I think it's a good idea. So just a couple of things, like discipline, number of contracts. We'll talk about demotion. This is not a job. You can't get demoted. Can't get demoted anything if you're a CSO, so we took that out. Then we did start doing some renumbering, because we took out a section. So you'll see Article 13 was Article 14 in the cop contract, et cetera. And you'll see that the rest of the way. They did get a $300 equipment footwear uniform allowance, allows them to spend, on average, 150. Sometimes they spend it all at once, and then they don't get to spend anything for the rest of the duration of the contract, but that's their prerogative. Sick leave change was mostly to align with what was passed by the council a few years ago on severance. That was nothing major. Some renumbering, the holiday thing. Couple of unions and police already have floating holiday instead of the Friday after Thanksgiving off. We asked them, you can pick one, can't have both. They picked the floating, which is fine. It's actually probably better for PDs, since they all have floating holiday and all are generally in the office on the day after Thanksgiving, unless they take a vacation day. We adjusted the part-time benefits. It was at 20, we made it 32. Didn't feel like if you're here 20 hours a week, you should get full benefits, so we made that 32. Wage increases were, we did adjust them a little bit in coming up in '22 to kind of meet the wage scale at, level that they're in. But it's a 2.75 increase for the second year or the final year of the contract. And again, it's just a two-year contract. So I thought it was a good outcome for all of us. It was quite arduous, I think, to get to the end of this agreement. Brian will attest to that. The mayor and Pam on the personnel committee will attest to that. But ultimately, I think we got a decent contract. They're paid pretty well. I was a little surprised at the get-go when they wanted to organize, but in the country that we live in, you have that prerogative, and so they organized. So we just dealt with it as we did. I would like to answer any questions if you have any, but it's a pretty straightforward contract that we negotiated with them that addresses their needs and the cities.
I asked all my questions this morning.
Okay.
Do you want to ask him again? I'm just asking. Okay, no, okay, okay. Any other questions? Yeah, it is what it is, and we did our best. And Mike and Brian and Ellie were in the negotiating room, right?
Yes.
So they did a good job.
We called chief falls in for one session when they came up with a list of things that they felt like kind of made them different than other CSOs in the West Metro area especially. I wouldn't say that they were successful in that. They do a lot of things that normal CSOs do. There are a few things that are different. But just because you do it doesn't really mean that you need to get paid extra for it. I mean, there are some that are just kind of a once-a-year, twice-a-year thing. And it's like, to me, that's kind of under the other duties as assigned that are in a lot of labor contracts or even just personnel policies. Or in everybody's job description here, other duties as assigned. So nothing rose to at least our liking that made them stand out amongst other CSOs there. They do a great job. They're vital to our operation. I told them, and I'll tell you, we'd like having them here. One of the things that, you know, gets tossed about is, what if we maybe had just a couple more cops and not have CSOs? That would be a money burner for us. I mean, CSOs do a lot of things, and chief can attest to this, that I wouldn't really want to spend the difference between their pay and a cop's pay to do like transport people down to Hennepin County to jail or do lockouts on cars or animal control. I mean, we're just wasting our money to do that. So they hold a vital position here. But like I said, we only have two employees, so they're doing a good job, so.
All right, so since we have no more questions or comments, then is there a motion to approve the labor agreement for the 20- agreement for the twenty-two and twenty-three, for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three with LELS, L E L S Local Number four seventy-three?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Martenson. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So next we removed item D and we'll move on to item E, which is approve plans and specification and authorize the advertisement for bids for our city projects for next year. Mr. Gadwa, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm as the council. So the council's being asked tonight to consider approving the plans and specifications for the twenty twenty-two street improvement project, which as you're all aware is in the Jennings Cove neighborhood. This kind of got started back in June and here we are, the plans are ready to go out for bid or ahead of schedule compared to previous years, which is exciting. And the scope of work is similar to years past. It's gone over at many council meetings, but improving streets and looking at the utilities underneath, which is the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer. However, as you'll notice in your agenda item here, Mr. Peters and his staff were able to tackle a lot of the storm sewer work that was proposed in the feasibility report this summer. And so as, as we talk about the opinion of probable costs, they'll see that those costs have actually been removed, saving the city a little bit of money there from a contract. In addition to the, the project and the, the street improvement itself, the city's standard specifications and detail plates are being updated. Those are available on the city's website and they're guiding documents for developers and, and for these street improvement projects within the city. So those are being updated. MINDOT's standard specifications were updated in twenty twenty, as well as a couple supporting documents like the City Engineers Association of Minnesota specifications. So those will be presented to the council at the first meeting in January. So as we look at the estimated cost summary, the feasibility report was around seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And as we look at an updated estimate, the final design completed, we're just shy of that at about seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. And those costs, as the council's aware, include a contingency and then of course indirects or engineering fees. So in final design, we take that contingency percentage from ten percent and move it down to five percent, but we're more certain with the proposed work that's included in the project. So once the product goes out to bid, the bid opening is scheduled for January nineteenth. Once it goes out to bid, we'll take that, that low bid cost and compute the actual project costs and present that to the city council. And you can see that the contract's scheduled for award on March seventh. The, the reason for the kind of gap in between the bid opening in March seventh is because we are in the public process, chapter four twenty-nine. So we do have to notice the residents that are being assessed via letter and outsold publication in the local papers. So that has to go through two publications. So that's kind of results in that gap. The assessment hearing, as I mentioned, is, will be held on March seventh. And at that time, we will have the estimated or the, the final assessment amount for the residents to, to present any questions or comments that they have to the city council at that time. So I can take any questions because we reviewed the plans and specifications on the project. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve them and authorize that for bid.
Thank you. Just one question. So the opening date, remember we had Tuesday or Wednesday? Was Wednesday the better one or was Tuesday?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday was the better one. Okay, I couldn't remember. I know we used to do it Tuesday and so we said, okay, I just want to make sure it's on the better day, so. All right, so it is Wednesday. Thank you. Okay, question? Okay. None? Good. We've been through this, so we kind of know what's, what, what's going on. So do I have a motion then to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids for our city project of twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, five-oh. And next we have authorize additional fees for the twenty-one municipal state aid project. I have a question real quick. Can we be reimbursed with MSA dollars for the additional costs?
That's a great question, Madam Mayor. Actually, the project is actually tracking under budget. So we've already submitted and received the state aid funds for this.
Okay.
So I think we'll actually, when we look at this project as a whole, it'll come in under what we were originally anticipating it would cost if the council approves this additional fee.
Okay, all right. So we already have the funds?
Correct.
Oh, that's good.
Correct.
Do we have to give some back? We'll find news for them.
I don't know that I've ever encountered that. I don't believe we do. So state, the way state aid, state aid finance works is when, when the project's awarded, they actually prefer that the city request the amount upfront.
Okay.
My guess is because of their bookkeeping costs or overhead costs, it's just easier to disperse that amount, particularly for a project of this size.
Sure.
And so we went ahead and submitted that early on in the project and the funds were electronically transferred shortly after the project started.
Good. So we should do this more often, right?
Well, we try. We try.
Okay, sorry, I had to ask and I didn't want to forget.
So Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Sunnyfield, Sunnyfield Road project started as a reclamation project. And as we move through the process, council's aware that there's some additional scope to the project that wasn't originally anticipated, specifically putting in the sand section underneath the road to make the strength of the road meet state aid standards. So that was one component. And then on the east side of the project, in order to meet, again, it was a stated design standard with the curvature of the road, that section was urbanized. And so there was additional design work put into there as well as some wetland permitting associated with some of the, the wetland impacts with getting those side slopes out from the edge of the road. So these are all things that, one item independently, not such a huge deal, but these things started creeping up on the engineering costs. And then we also added in the Morningview Terrace, which wasn't a significant amount, but again, an incremental increase. And so when we, when we're looking here at the end of the project, we came up to fourteen thousand two hundred dollars in additional engineering costs that we hadn't anticipated at the outset of the project. And so the request is for council to authorize the additional fees, which would bring the engineering indirect costs up one point four percent. So we're right, we're just over that twenty-five percent mark if council authorizes this additional fee. And we are working with the contractor to close out the project. So we haven't settled on final quantities, but we are tracking to be under budget, under the contract price for this project. So that was good news.
Yeah. Okay, council, any questions? All right. Is there a motion then to approve the, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Hold on. To approve the municipal, the additional fees for the twenty-one municipal state aid street improvement project?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Martenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further question? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five-oh. And next we'll move on to the change order for the utility. How many times is this now?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is for the utility improvement project, which is lift station three reconstruction along with some force main work that was completed months and months ago. The hang-up really is with the lift station. It kind of first started with supply chain issues and you guys were aware of the process change order one and two. There was an actual change order for some extra work that was change order three, I believe, and then now here we are requesting change order four, which is just extending the substantial completion date up to next, beginning of next summer. The work right now is in Excel Energy's hands to actually connect power to the lift station. It's sitting there ready to be connected. Yeah. So we're hoping that that takes place here before the holidays. Once it's connected, we have power to the lift station. There's still a lot that needs to be done. The pumps need to get hooked up and everything needs to be kind of run through and then we'll get together with city staff and the contractor and engineering to actually do start up a lift station. So we do anticipate that work's still taking place here probably.
Now, the old one is still in operation, right?
The old one is still in operation.
Good.
Yeah, it's still working and it's not in, it's not in any dire straits that it, it has risked of not pumping. And so we're okay on that. And, but once we get the new ones started up, we do have to abandon that all. That work may take place next spring, just depending on weather, road restrictions and what all that work entails. And so that's why we're here tonight is just to kind of, one last extension of the contract. The work's been going really well. The contractors have been great to work with, so it's been overall successful. We're just kind of missing that, that substantial completion date.
All right, so we're going to move it again, but hopefully last time, till June, I think you said. Till June.
So Madam Mayor, if I may, when Mr. Gadwa first approached with this change order, we were looking at shortening up that substantial completion date and we had a good conversation about, you know, while that is our desire and the council's desire, perhaps we should extend that out just a little bit to give ourselves a little bit more buffer so that the council wouldn't.
You don't have to come back a fifth time.
And kind of.
And we do understand the, the supply chain issue and so on, so, okay. With that then, is there a motion to approve the change?
One, did you have a question? When we abandoned the old unit, is that included in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the whole lift station itself was along some costs and included that work.
And it wasn't cheap?
No.
I don't think so, yeah, okay.
Good question. All right. So now, any other questions or comments? Hearing none then, is there a motion to approve change order number four for the utility improvement project for twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Martenson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five-oh. So we'll move on to staff reports.
Do you want to go first?
Sure.
I mean, mine got moved, but I still have.
You still have? No, no, you had your time.
It's not going to be like that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just would like to just provide you with an update on what MINDOT is doing for their road safety audit on Highway seven. So this, this audit stemmed from some letters received by some local government units on, along Highway seven with some of the safety concerns. There was a fatality there back in June. And so MINDOT has, is doing this study from Highway one hundred to Hollywood Township.
Oh, wow.
Significant length of roadway. They have divided it into three segments because there is such a difference in, you know, Hopkins, highly urbanized versus, you know, all the way out to Hollywood Township suburban or, pardon me, rural area. So MINDOT has hired a consultant to do this. They have a fairly robust public input. Ms. Poulphos has included links to MINDOT's website on Minutista's webpage so that residents can go and put feedback. So I encourage councils to take a look at there. I looked last week, there was already a few comments. So it's interactive, so you can go and post your comment on the webpage and it'll show for the public to see. They've also, I, they'll also be doing some information boards at various locations along that Highway seven corridor. They're just fine, I think they finalized the sites and they're just finalizing the message board to get that public input. So, you know, they look at, at all the public input, they look at the accident data, they have asked for technical information from city engineers from each of the communities to make sure that the, the community's interests are being included in the plan. So just wanted you to be aware of this and I think they're, they're proceeding for some draft information out early next year.
And I'm sure, Paul, you might have some input too on Highway seven if, you know, you might want to share that with the authorities, whatever, you know, engineers and or go online because I know there's been quite a few accidents out there.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, that's, that's a good point. Whenever we complete an accident report, that automatically goes into their data, so they see that, any accident that we write on Highway seven or State Patrol in our area and then other agencies, the further out you go, all of that data, they have access to it as part of that. But certainly anything I can offer in addition, I will.
Okay, thank you.
So that was all I had.
That's all, okay.
These updates, are they going to be, if the residents have questions, can they find on our website where to go to to get updates?
For the road safety audit? Yes, so there's, I'm just looking at the city's homepage right now and, and you can click on the link there and it should take you to, yeah, there's a couple, a couple different opportunities. They have the project website and then the public input webpage.
Okay.
And that's where all the updates will be posted.
Staff reports.
I have one additional one. Some council members know this because I had a chance to talk with them today, some I forgot to tell, so I apologize in advance here. But over, starting on Friday afternoon, we're at the dedication, well, it was last Tuesday. So we thought the water tower would be up and running by today. It is not. So last Friday, I get a call from Gary and, you know, Gary sometimes can, you know, get his Irish up. I don't know if he's Irish, but this is the most hop and mad I think I've ever seen Gary, so it's a serious issue. So we had an employee from the fabricator company that does the construction and setup for the tower, correct?
Correct, Phoenix.
Phoenix, Phoenix Fabricators. The tower wasn't, doesn't have power. We've been asking Excel for quite a while to, for the power. There's also some electrical panel work. As you just heard from Adam, there's been some supply chain things. I know that's part of it, but nonetheless, we don't have power. So after filling the tank, doing the back D testing and blah, 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 this guy on his own made a decision to empty out the tank because it wasn't, it was just going to sit there and was probably going to have bacteria in it in a couple of days or freeze or both. So he dumped the tank unbeknownst to anybody on city staff, unbeknownst to the engineer. And we got a call and it was flooding the neighbor, the Turks property. And so these guys worked quite late on Friday. They were here all day Saturday. They figured out a way to drain the rest of the tower without flooding the neighbor's yard. And so now, and then also on Friday, I gave Gary contact. Her name's Michelle Swanson. She's our community relations manager for our area at Excel. So I'm asking her to kind of expedite this whole power thing. So we don't exactly know. I want, I don't, I guess I'll say at fault, but you know, it's, could be a combo platter between the, the company that was supposed to contact, the, the builder of the tower, could be Excel, should be a combination, or could be a combination thereof of both. But nonetheless, we dumped all the rest of the water out of the tower. Now we're sitting and waiting for this electrical panel work to show up and the electrical hook up by Excel. If I missed anything, Gary, it's kind of in a nutshell what's going on.
Well, the guy that dumped the tower.
Yeah.
He actually started the dumping and then left the site. I mean, this, this is what made me so mad because you don't dump five hundred thousand gallons of water and then just leave, you know? And, and poor Gary, you know, this, we're talking, you know, three o'clock or four o'clock Friday afternoon, Gary's called and then, and Mike is called and I'm called and, and then Turks were very, very upset, rightfully so. And this just happened because on Tuesday, when we were there for the dedication, I said to the engineers, I said, okay, not, not these because these people are not, it weren't, aren't in charge of it. It's a different company. Just want to make that clear. We said to them, please, please, you know, because we knew it was going to be dumped because they, they have to cleanse it. I guess this is the reason why. So I said, be sure you talk to Turks before you do this so that they know what's happening and if there's any issues, they can notify you right away and be sure you don't have the water running on their property. And voila, what happens Friday afternoon. So it was very, very disturbing and Mike called, called.
Chad.
Chad and Miles. And then I, I called Chad and Miles as well, so they knew that we were all very upset and he, Gary, and Gary went above and beyond the call of duty. He was there Friday night, he was there all day Saturday. He really went above and beyond and he talked to Turks and talked them off the ledge, as he said, and, and really, really did an outstanding job. So kudos, yes, actually. Thank you, Gary, very, very much.
Yeah, and he did a nice job, kind of gave up an event he had to go to over the weekend because of that. So, good news is our contacts with Michelle Swanson at Excel are starting to pay off. So, good news is our contacts with Michelle Swanson at Excel are starting to pay off. Gary got a phone call from her this morning, got a conversation, phone call, email, somebody with the, the project manager for this thing.
The design engineer from Excel, yes.
From Excel. We've got a form that we had to fill out that's already submitted. So we're rolling on that. Again, we don't know when we're going to get our power, but we know we got their attention, so. And it could be a day, it could be a week, I don't know. But we're trying to find out, we're also trying to find out when they got the request from the, the company to install it. Because as you just heard a little before, Excel's had some timeliness issues. And we've, we've had our share of timeliness issues with Excel.
Yeah, with Excel.
With our, when we're doing our construction of our water treatment plant. So, I mean, it's, it's always something, but, you know, we even insisted in our monthly meetings, make sure you talk to Excel. And they said, well, that's on the fabricator to do it. No, make sure you talk to Excel because we know what might happen. And sure enough, it unfortunately happened, so. So I think we're making some progress. It still sucks that we don't have water to our residents, but.
Well, we have water to our residents.
Well, in the new, from the new town.
From the new town.
Yeah.
And there will be site modifications made. We talked to the Turk family and talking with S E H. We will be making some site modifications to prevent anything like that happening again in the future, so.
Yeah.
Where did the water go?
Pardon?
Where did the water go?
Right through their pasture, past their buildings and out into their fields.
How did you reroute it then?
Um, we used a hydrant downstream, like we're supposed to, which evacuates it into the ponds or by Hunter's Crest and through the exit that way, so.
So it's slower, but it's better, which is fine. We had no rush on this.
And we shouldn't have to flush it again.
Well, they'd be one more time, once they re.
Well, it'd be a semi flush. I mean, this, I mean, because the monochloreine that was in the tank for the back T testing, you know, have to bring the level down and refill it to kind of dilute it a little bit. Otherwise, people really notice the high chlorine content in it. But it shouldn't be this much next time either, so.
Okay.
So just wanted to get you up to date on that. Unfortunately, that's what we're stuck with, so.
Yeah, really. Thank you, and thank you, Gary, again. Any other staff reports?
I've done, if anybody else can.
And I know we don't have planning commission meeting on December, so we'll move on. I'll quickly, so again, I was also involved in that fiasco on Friday, just via phone calls, nothing like Gary. So I'll be attending Northwest League coming up on this Wednesday if my power does not go out. And I had several meetings with residents throughout the past month and personnel committee meeting, that's about it.
On the 30th of November, I attended the ribbon cutting. On the first, I attended the personal meeting as well. And I did want to know it on the calendar coming up for 2022, Trista Day is not listed. And I think that's something we should probably bring up pretty soon so that we can get the planning, you know, going forward.
Go ahead, Paul. I know what you're going to say, but.
Madam Mayor and Council, I think that was intentional because there, there's been discussion in a couple of years past about potentially changing or moving that date out a bit just for more stable weather.
Yeah.
And so that is a decision that will have to be moved. If we leave it where we typically do, then the planning typically starts by the end of December, so.
So maybe, maybe mention that to Lieutenant Squires so that in January, we want to talk about it right away.
Very good.
So we don't lose it on the radar, so.
Paul mentioned that at our last staff meeting. He says his staff's getting antsy because we aren't talking about it yet, so it's good timing.
Yeah, yeah, good reminder, good one, thank you.
Attended the ribbon cutting on the 30th. On the 18th, attended Pioneer Serre Creek. Big ticket item there was the watershed was advised of the preliminary projected numbers from Bowser Bureau of, and I always have to read Bureau Board of Water and Soil Resources, state agency, of the projected grant money that would be available for Pioneer Serre Creek starting July. That's a two-year window they work on. And it's projected to be 159,000. Numbers are not finally yet. For instance, Minnehaha Creek, you would expect it to be bigger, 418,000. So they're going to ask for a TAC meeting, probably sometime early spring, to see what possible projects the cities might have so we can draw on some of those funds. Funds don't roll to us, they're just available to write grants against. So those are the two big things out of this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I attended the ribbon cutting on the 30th and then the last meeting I've had was with the planning commission. And as I said, that was handled exceptionally well. Very good information, it was distributed to all the residents who came.
Good.
I also attended the ribbon cutting. I attended the St. Bonnie fire meeting on the 18th, her aunt. Chief Anderson just got reelected to his second two-year term and all of his other guys got reelected. So they were very happy about that because it shows new positions are contested and morale is good with everybody. He stated they had no issues with the County Road 92 project or County Road 15 closures. There were no issues on their calls and they're very happy it's all done.
Yeah, I bet.
They did not get the DNR grant for new pagers, but the chief did get permission from St. Bonnie Council to purchase new pagers for the $12,496. Their relief fund, relief funded good with Spastogen. They sold the Vikings tickets and got $14,000 off their mailers. They were happy with that. They got a random grant from UFC, which is United Farmer Co-op, for about $2,400 that they didn't ask for. They just had the money and gave it to the fire department, which they appreciated. They have paid Mount Fire for their old duty vehicle, $10,000. They will get it by the first of the year.
And Kathleen, are they going to be used, is that the one they'll be using for the duty officer?
Yeah.
Great, good.
And that will go into effect in January, the duty officer program. Their old rescue 12 truck was damaged answering a call, but the person who hit him was liable. So they are collecting the insurance money for that, but they aren't going to fix it because the cost to fix it isn't going to work. They are already getting the new vehicle, the new rescue 12 truck is in, so they don't need to fix the old one. So they will look to sell the vehicle in 2022 and that money would go to their capital outlay fund. He estimated they'd probably get around $20,000 when they sell it. Building issues, they need to replace two furnaces and the AC units that are 23 years old. He was getting quotes the week of the meeting, so he probably has them now, but we won't have another meeting until the spring. Did note, we went into the bay, the furnaces are black, which shows that there's an issue, I guess.
Let's see, hope they won't start on fire.
From a dioxide issue, I believe, so.
Good thing the fire department's nearby. Case of blows.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, that wasn't the furnace, that was the bay heaters that are black. And those were scheduled to be replaced in 2026, but because of the blackness on it, they're looking into replacing them.
Now.
This coming year. We discussed the fire district just because of the other towns and townships that are there. Chief explained the duty officer will start in January, it's in the budget. They'll have a full-time guy Friday 6:00 PM to Monday 6:00 AM and then weeknight 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. They don't have anyone for the day shift currently, which is normal. They don't need it, they're saying they have lots of, everybody answering the calls they need, so. Talked about the equipment that they will need. As of now, they're planning for a new engine in 2024. If they do get one, they will get one that's identical, two mounds. So that way the crews will be able to work better than load the equipment in case we do become a fire district to load each other's vehicles.
Good idea.
They did bring up the possibility of a ladder truck. All the firemen would love it, but they don't really need one right now. Possible for like 2034, he said, at this point, they just don't need it. If they do get a ladder truck, it won't fit in the station.
Did you say 2034?
Yes.
Good reason to do a fire district. And then you know that, that satellite station that we want to build, yeah.
I thought it was more funny how excited the guys were to get the ladder truck. That just, it sounded like it was a new toy for them, just like, did they get it? Yeah, it was funny. Uh, 2023, they will need a new grass rig, which is just a pickup truck, basically, he said. 2027, the station will need a new roof and they need a new concrete pad, which is scheduled for 2022, so next year. Staffing is full, they do have one or two open slots that they'll try and fill in the fall. The reason for the fall is because training starts in August, so there's no reason to fill it before then. They have more guys responding to calls because everybody's working from home still. Budget looks good and there was a small surplus after payroll goes out in December. So they are purchasing some additional masks and tanks. He's planning on getting six new gear sets, which are pants and jackets, expected to cost $2,300 each. If they're mortal, they'll get five, total they need nine. Finally, for 2021, they are on pace to hit calls. Last year they had 180, so they're on pace for that. Minatrista has had 103 so far. And they're having their Santa breakfast on 12/18. And meetings for 2022 are May 19th and November 17th. Any questions on that?
No, that was very thorough, but you always do a very thorough job. Thank you very much.
Come back for the meeting and take it up.
I know, I know you do, and it's great, it's absolutely great.
I think Anne's out of the job.
Because I have a mound fire, continue.
I know, I know.
Anne, I think you're out of a job.
We kind of agree. Yeah, we talked about that. That would be good. Mike and I attended the mound fire meeting on the first. They scheduled their meetings for next year. Do you guys want to know those names? First ones in January. Mount did not get the grant for the new engine, so they did use the bond for it. It takes 15 months to get the truck. The cost was 675,000 and they bonded for the 600,000, 75 came out of the fund that they had. The new duty vehicle is here, obviously, because they sold St. Bonnie theirs. It will be ready to go on 12/24. They're putting the lights on it, they were putting it on when we were there on Wednesday, so. They sold their old grass rig to Cherry Fire Department for $3,500. They got their new one this summer and it's working. The unit being replaced by the new engine is the 1995 Freightliner Engine 24. And it will be sold, but probably for around $10,000 since it's reached the end of its recommended life, so it's not worth that much. They applied for a FEMA grant for COVID supplies, but they haven't heard back. But I think he was very confident they were getting it based on the wording on the online application process. Thank you. Calls are above normal. They usually have 575 at the end of November and they're already up to 606. The biggest issues are the lift assist calls, they're driving the numbers. They had four patients who caused over 817 hours.
Wow.
Yes. It's a big issue. So they're working on sorting out how to limit those calls because the guys who keep responding are getting, it can cause burnout, so far it hasn't, but they get frustrated just responding to those. One person had 20 calls.
Wow.
Yeah, it was, wow, it was a lot. So they're trying to figure out how to change it, whether it's adjusting the duty program so there's two people who can respond to those, changing which guys go for those at which times and, yeah. So they're working on that. There's no great answer. Some of the people are at Presbyterian homes or people who are staying in their homes longer than they should be, so they need help. So there's no easy answer for one. They did over 44 public relations events in 2021, which resulted in 1,137 staff hours. The firemen are not paid for those hours, they're just volunteer. The golf outing was a great fundraiser again for the relief fund, it raised about $17,000. The dance, which they had instead of the fish fry, had about 800 plus people there. They're discussing bringing it back. They've had a lot of people call in and say they like it and they want to do it again. It's much easier to set up and do than the fish fry, but the fish fry usually brings in about $34,000. And so obviously the dance is not last, people were asked about doing both, but that's a lot more work. Golf outing is a fundraiser put on by Surfside and they've been picking a charity or an organization to do that with, so the fire department will not necessarily get it for a third day next year. The fire open house was attended by over 400 people, which was awesome, my kids went. They had a helicopter, they let them spray the hoses, they had a blast, they burnt the building, which was so cool. It's so hot, oh my gosh, the heat coming out of that was crazy. The kids all had a blast, it was crazy and fun and the ladder truck up, yeah. And they did ride through town and that was very cool. Their relief fund is very well funded, 5.7 million. The special fund goes towards the pension and the actuarial valuation will be done at the end of December and they expect it to be over 94% fully funded. The general fund, part of the relief fund is at 361,000, which is also good. And they will apply for FEMA grants next year, they just don't know which ones yet because they haven't posted.
Great, thank you very much. And thanks for going to both meetings.
Yes, I like going to those. Anne and I were talking, I would like to take over St. Bonnie as well for next year.
Okay, well, we're in January.
I'm not going to be at the January 3rd meeting, we have a trip planned that's pushed off because of COVID, so it's happening then, so.
So we'll make those appointments and just, yeah, we'll do that. I, I mean, I think we'll do that, I mean, why not? Okay, so, all right, and good to know. Thank you for letting us know that. So just real quick, I forgot about the broadband meeting. Anne and I met with staff, so we will be doing an update. I don't know if Ally would have done it or not, but we gave her some direction and things, so she'll bring that back. And then also just a reminder, December 15th is Mike's retirement party. Please join us, wish him well, thank. Good wishes and so on, so we're looking forward to that, it'll be a fun party, I'm sure, so.
Do you know, is, is Lakeside up on the tower, the Sunnyfield Tower? They put this up?
Not yet, yeah. And that's one of the things we'll bring back. We might not, I'll, we'll, I'll check with staff, we'll see if, if it's going to come back on the third or if it's the second week, it might be the second, yeah, second one, so.
I know, I know they're working with AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Because we're putting, they're putting a railing up there and I know that they're working with them for mounting.
Okay.
So first priority is AT&amp;T, second priority is ours and then Lakeside, unfortunately. So we'll see how much room there is when they're done.
Okay, well, hopefully there'll be enough. Yeah, they'll, they'll be, that'll be enough, we'll see.
There should be, it's pretty full up there.
Yeah. All right, so with that then, is there a motion to?
I do have a question. Kathleen said something that triggered a thought. In this fund's payments, we decommission, I assume, one of our squad cars? If we decommission, is that for, is that stripping off, making them a civilian car again?
Yes.
And then do we send them to auction and sell them as excess equipment?
We do.
Okay, so we see the proceeds rolled back in eventually.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a check for Brian tomorrow and another one probably in the next couple of weeks.
You know, is that, well, are those funds that were budgeted? And if not, can we use some of those funds for the fingerprinting?
That's a question for Brian, but I'll give him the check and.
Okay. How, how much was it?
I think we got, I want to say it was 700 or 8,000 for the, the first car, which is a lot more than I thought. These are cars with over 100,000 miles. That was a 2013. And then the second one is, I think, a 15 or 16, it's got 130,000 miles, so just barely broken in.
Quite lightly used, right?
The utility, so that one will probably bring a little bit more money.
Okay.
Because it's not a sedan, so.
Yeah, so let us, yeah, let us know, maybe at the next meeting, how much and, and how much we can of that will then maybe go for the fingerprinting. All right, so any other questions? Thank you, good, good, good question. All those in favor of adjourning? Well, okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made by Anne and seconded by Pam. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh and we are adjourned.